Okay, good evening. This is the Walpole Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight is Wednesday, October 28th, 2020. We're doing a public hearing for case number 0520, Wall Street Development Corporation for Dupie Street. This is a comprehensive permit under Mass General Laws, Chapter 40B. And this was continued from October 26th, which was two nights ago when we heard from peer reviews. And now the topic for tonight is going to be neighbors' comments on what we heard and what was presented at the last meeting. So I open it up at this point to any of the neighbors, and I see we have a number of the neighbors here right now. Anybody that wants to go, please take yourself off mute, and we'll recognize you.
Chairman Lee, I would suggest, given the number of people here, if it's okay. Sorry, I'm sending an email. Some of the neighbors are asking for the login. If it's okay, if folks could enter their name into the chat and we could recognize them one at a time?
Okay, right now there's three people on here. So I run this with 21 at one time, so I can handle.
Okay.
If any one of these people wants to say something, please take yourself off mute, and I will recognize you.
Hi, John. This is Tyler Hool. I'm at 20 Victoria Circle.
Good evening. How are you, Tyler?
Good. How are you doing? Appreciate the opportunity to speak here, and apologies, I got my toddler here. So if you hear that, he's eating a little food right now. So a few things that I just wanted to bring up. I know we've discussed parking before. I do still have legitimate concerns there due to the lack of visitor parking spaces. I do worry that folks will park on Victoria Circle and then cut through my property. Obviously, and Lou dismissed it, one thing that we hadn't mentioned previously was that... This is actually based in fact. I've seen people cut through 27 Victoria Circle. It's not actually on any of the butter lists or anything that you've seen here, but I've seen them cut through 27 Victoria Circle to Highland Street on a fairly regular basis. That's something that I'd like to avoid. Another thing I'd like to bring up is the trees. Given there's very little land here to start with, and the large majority of it is going to be turned into roadway, driveway, the units themselves, the swale, the drain is based in, I don't know, four square feet of usable open space, really can only assume that all the trees in the area have to come down. And so that's actually very concerning to me because I'd estimate a bunch of those trees are, you know, close to or over 100 feet tall. So if this happens, I will actually have a very thin strip of extremely tall trees located on my property that will no longer be protected from wind, right? When there's a bunch of trees in there, it makes them all healthier and protected from wind and less likely to fall. So this is a big hazard. I've already had multiple trees come down on Victoria Circle and Sibyl this year, three by my count. And this would only make the situation worse. So unless I want to risk it and my insurance, that's tens of thousands of dollars out of my pocket to cut trees and replant something smaller so I can maintain some level of greenery and privacy and through no fault of my own, right? Another thing I want to bring up is privacy. So the proximity of the homes to the edge of my property is pretty minimal to begin with, leaves no room for open space really. Combined with the height of the townhouses, my understanding is that they have walkout basements somewhere, so they'll be at least half a story taller than all the houses in the area, or at least same compared to those. They'll probably have a better view into my own backyard than I will. So that obviously causes privacy concerns. So I'd be in favor of fencing and natural privacy landscaping through trees. If I had to choose, I'd love a berm with some trees on top. And I know there's the swale there, so if that berm could be placed in between the swale in my property, that would be ideal. Trash and recycling, I think that still needs to be resolved. Per my understanding, I think the developers is hoping to tap into the town, but per the Board of Health letter on April 10th... Yeah, that's my daughter. Per the Board of Health letter on April 10th, this development does not fall under town curbside pickup, so currently there's no location for trash or recycling. Another thing is lighting. I didn't see on any of the plans about any lighting there specifically. I'd like to know where street lighting will be located, specifically in the Hammerhead. So where that is, I'm actually concerned if a street lamp is at the end of that, that that leaks into my property all night long. We'll be curious to see what happens there. And then, I mean, a few things that came up last night, and you know, water runoff is still one, we're taking down a bunch here. I'm not sure that I fully understand that everything in the plans will alleviate, you know, the massive amount of trees that are no longer there to suck all the water up. The site building plans differ from the architectural plans from what we understand, so be curious to see what those look like. And then, like I said, the construction runoff, that's obviously a big concern of mine. And, you know, luckily, there's no pass game on tonight, so Lou hopefully will be able to pay a little bit more attention tonight. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Tyler. And I got a number of points from my notes out of that. The parking concerns and the cut through, tree removal and the loss of protection of those trees, and definitely an issue that we're going to have to figure out on this. Also, privacy, you'd like to see fence or a berm with trees. Trash and recycling, it's still not shown on the plans, we agree with that. And then finally, lighting, we will be looking for a lighting plan to see how this is going to be lit and how it affects you, or more importantly, how you can be protected from it. So those are the things that I just noted down from that. Okay, we have a few more people that have come in, and if you would like, we're still only talking about five people. If you want, take yourself off mute and introduce yourself, and you can make your comments.
Hi, John. This is Julie Sullivan at 24 Victoria Circle. Very similar concerns to Tyler. We're right next to each other. The one thing that I did want to bring up again, I know I brought this up during the last meeting, is the runoff issue, potential runoff issues from units nine to 12. And I think it was a bit concerning to me is that this didn't really come up in the peer review at all. So units one to eight, it does directly flow towards High Plain Street. The elevation on the other side, on the side that my house is at, is it goes at a diagonal. It doesn't go straight towards Summit. So it goes towards my house, and it goes towards the house next to me on Highland, and then part of it towards Summit. And there really have been no mitigation measures whatsoever to manage that water runoff. There's no swale, there's no retention pond, and probably very likely because there's no room for a retention pond on that side. But, you know, I think listening to Tetra Tech speak about how the fact that even the retention pond on the other side could potentially overflow at some point, what does that mean for the other side where there's no retention pond and no swale whatsoever to manage that water runoff? Sorry, that's all I got. I don't want to repeat everything that Tyler said.
You know, I've got my notes runoff units, what is it, nine to 12? Which ones did you say?
Yes, nine to 12.
Nine to 12. And yeah, we did discuss that at the last meeting, and you are correct. The plan does not show any retention of water on that side, the Highland and Summit Ave side of the development, so.
Can I ask just a quick question? Could you just describe the drainage situation on your property now? And what sort of heavy storms, what sort of ponding or anything like that you get on your property?
Yeah, so Bob, I actually have been there for a year. And obviously, you've been to drought for the last year, so I can't really speak from, you know, a lot of great experience. I'm actually going more so based on what my neighbors have said about our basement flooding in the past, some water issues that we've, you know, seen, clearly seen in our basement. But as far as actual experience of the last year, I haven't, you know, I haven't been fortunate enough to experience that.
No, but the prior comments, there were a lot of folks who mentioned water in the basement, and I just was trying to get a sense of your situation. But obviously, if you've only been there a year and you haven't had a ton of rain recently, so it makes sense that you wouldn't really have much experience with that yet. Hopefully, you won't in the future.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob, for that follow-up. Julie, anything else?
No, that's it, John. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if somebody else wants to take themselves off mute and introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm Giannis Soleth from High Plain Street, right on the corner of Dupie. Can you hear me? Okay. I still have grave concerns about the number of units because even if there were three units, you're talking six families in a very small area. It's still going to generate a lot of traffic. I'm concerned about, even with widening the street, it's going to take away from my privacy. And I would also like to have trees or a fence, depending on the time, is appropriate to take care of my privacy issue. Because with headlights coming back and forth, or just even during the daytime, and the number of people constantly coming back and forth, it's just a very quiet neighborhood right now. And so I have grave concerns about the traffic. And the traffic right now, even though we're still in COVID, has gotten so bad. It starts rush hour traffic around 3 o'clock, 3:00, 3:15 in the afternoon. And I just saw the other day some cars churning around because they weren't going to sit in line waiting for the traffic to move. So that traffic is a huge issue. So to me, the number of units is going to be a minimum of four cars each unit. And then chances are, there's going to be more than that. And then the people that come to visit, the holidays, we've talked about this before. So it is huge, and that's part of my reason too for saying, and to stuff six families minimum, because I don't know if you can go any lower than that, that's a lot of people to put on a little over an acre of land. I think it's totally unwarranted, you know, if there was any way for the zoning board to have ever changed the way to lay out for a single-family house the way, you know, then there would only be one family living there, but we're dealing with this. So that's why I feel that even three units is pushing it a lot. And it's just going to be a bad impact on the whole neighborhood. And also the wildlife, I noticed recently, I guess there's a packer den, I'm not sure what you call it, for foxes. And every night around quarter to 10, 6 o'clock, it happens, my garage light goes on, I've seen the fox go by. So, you know, the wildlife is going to be really disrupted, and who knows what's going to go where. And the fox have been around here for a while. And also in terms of the flooding issue, the whole town of Walpole has, it's a high water table. It's a known flooding issue. My yard floods terribly when we get a heavy rain, even through a drought. And then in the spring, if we have a lot of snow and that melts, you know, if it does, if it's not a slow melting, you're going to get huge flooding. I've even had to have a generator out in my yard one time to get the water out of the basement. So I mean, that's something that the whole area is very familiar with. So I can't see that putting units back there is going to help us any. You know, I remember when the engineer said how, you know, they wanted, you know, loop around the water. But, you know, if you can improve it, great, but I just don't see it. I've been here a number of years, and nothing has ever been done, even to potholes in the street. Nobody cares about it. And you keep passing the buck as to whether Dupie Street is town property or not, nobody really knows. I don't know any historian in town that can tell you anything about it. It's not a private way, it is maintained sort of by the town, not totally. So, you know, but there's nothing we can do about that. So anyway, but my major concern is the number of units because that is going to be the largest impact on the traffic. And, you know, and also if you're going to have children that have to walk to school, that's still going to be another issue. And then the snow removal is horrendous anyway. And like every other side street, if we have a real snowy winter or just big storms, you cannot see trying to get out of the side street, but that's wherever you go. So that, but that still is a reality, as well as the blind spot that we've talked about too when the sun is out there, that you can't see and you can't be seen. So I think that's it for now, and I guess I'll just keep repeating those things because they're really important. Now, what really bothers me is how the housing authority can say that the project is consistent with the homes in the neighborhood. These are all single-family homes, so that really I have a big issue with.
Okay, and one of the things, you just talked about Dupie Street. What is the status with the town? Ashley, do we have any clarification on that as far as, is it a private way?
Nope, not a private way, not a private way.
Oh, I'm asking Ashley.
I will reach out to Carl in engineering for a clear answer on that. I'll email him right now.
That'd be nice. I've been here for decades and nobody knows.
Well, it's, you know, that's what, we're going to, we can find out if it's a town, if it's a town-accepted road or not, and, you know, what that actually means, I'm not even sure about that myself, but.
That's what I'm saying. It depends on who wants what, as to what they decide it is.
No, no, if it's a town-accepted street, it's in the record of the town, and it's accepted by town meeting. There's a whole process that we go through, but I would like that answered, so we know what way.
It would be nice. I mean, no matter who I've asked, no one ever knows. And even like I told you before, the police never even knew where the street was, so that's not comforting. But after all this, they will.
Okay, Giannis, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else want to take themselves off mute and make some comments for the public record?
Hey, John, how you doing? This is Kieran Martin, 16 Victoria Circle. Thanks for the opportunity again just to speak. Three points I wanted to make, two of them kind of reaffirm. I agree with everything obviously that Tyler and Julie and even Giannis herself mentioned. But just two of them to reiterate, I think the first, just what came up on Monday night from the peer reviewer, just about the site plans and the architectural plans not being, you know, in tandem is concerning, obviously. Like, I'm sure the dimensions are accurate, but if the scale is off, that even makes me more concerned about how tightly packed those houses are together and how much closer that physical, you know, back wall is to the end of the property line. So I think that's something that needs to be addressed, you know, very quickly. The other one was, and Tyler hinted at this, but it was something that really only came to light recently for me, that these are, you know, from rear walkout basements, which means that two and a half stories high from a lot, from my perspective in Victoria Circle, is already higher than me because obviously geographically we're lower. And just what, you know, what kind of regulations are in place for that, for houses next door that could potentially be a story or so higher looking in on our property? And the third point I wanted to bring up, and this is something I asked in the last meeting, and I've been doing a bit of research since, was from, you know, not just specific to this one development, but from an ADA perspective, like the American Disability Association, is either from a, I've done research from Massachusetts, but from a town perspective, I see a lot of requirements in terms of building accessibility. But from like, from an actual street and a subdivision perspective, you know, like, do we as a town have a stance on that? Because no sidewalk obviously limits that for people with certain disabilities. And I think that's something we should, even if we have a stance, that we should be very public about what that stance is. Either we require it to be, you know, to what level of accessibility for disabled people it is or not. Thank you, John and the board.
Okay, and on the ADA, the town does have requirements for sidewalks, but of course, in 40B, the applicant is asking to waive the requirements that the town has for things. But your point is well-taken that, you know, there are no sidewalks in this, and is there a way that we can, you know, we could require it to make it safe for the people that live there and will be traveling through there? So I think that's in my notes, so thank you.
Thanks, John.
Anybody else want to take themselves off mute and make some comments?
Hi, Board. My name is Mark Rice, and I'm on Summit Avenue, 64 Summit Avenue. One of the points I wanted to just bring up that was pretty apparent from the other night was the safety issue with how narrow the street is. It seemed to me like a big safety concern. If there's a lack of parking and there's no guest parking, and there's an emergency vehicle has to get through and people are parked on the street, seems to me like kind of a safety hazard. That was the biggest takeaway I had. Thank you.
And that's why we had the peer review, and you're exactly right. If, you know, you sat through the meeting the other night, and it sounds like you did, Mark, that's what we took away, that there were a number of concerns about parking and accessibility and things, you know, where is all this stuff going to fit on the site? So, yep, and those have all been provided, those comments have been provided to the applicant, and now it's on the applicant to come back and address those or revise the plans or something like that. Okay. Anybody else?
Hey, John, it's Tim Simeon from Summit Ave as well, right near Mark. Everybody said everything that needs to be said, but I just wanted to throw back out there the issues that this whole area has with water pressure and power. And the water pressure is incredibly awful, and there's a lot of new houses that have gone up over the years. I've been here off and on for almost 40 years, and the houses are a lot bigger than they used to be. There's a lot more of them, smaller houses are getting knocked down for bigger houses to be built. I don't know if that affects it, but a lot of people have spent a lot of money, including myself, to get pipes put in and get things done, and nothing has improved it. We lose our power a ton. I think it was Tyler who pointed out about the trees falling. We've actually had on two different circumstances, trees falling on our street that took power lines down just this past year alone. I removed about $15,000 worth of trees from behind my property, just from trees falling down over the past two years. It's just, there's some weird issues with the neighborhood and a lot of stuff going on, but I think the water pressure is a major issue, and I just don't know how much more stuff we can actually pack into this neighborhood. And power, I don't know if some of these units will be on the same grid as us, or I don't actually know how that works because I don't work for that kind of company, but we have had more power issues over the last five years. It's been brought to the attention of the town. I've been down to Town Hall talking to multiple people about it. And it's just, it's terrible around here, so I just wanted to throw that out there because I just, again, additional stuff being added to circumstance, it's already not very good. But appreciate you guys listening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tim. And yeah, the power issue, that's, I think that is not in the purview of the zoning board. Anybody have any, any zoning board members have any thoughts on that? Suzanne, yeah, go ahead.
I would think that the utility, you know, whether that's EverSource or whomever is responsible for that part of the grid, in all likelihood. But it could be informative if DPW or somebody has some, you know, understanding of the grid there, that we could get some sense of how the project is going to interconnect and whether that interconnection is going to exacerbate the, it sounds like, existing problems.
Sorry, Bob, real quick, the assistant town administrator sent a bunch of messages off, I believe it was last year, if I can find my emails, to the power company who said the issue was... And when the guys were down there working on the lines, they just actually said that the... And again, I don't know if this is true, or this is just talking to somebody who was actually working on the lines, just said that there's too much stuff in that grid right now, and the grid is really old and it hasn't been updated, and there's water, there's just tons of stuff on it now from... If you know how many new streets have been built in this area since the mid-'90s that are attached off of it with the amount of houses that were put on. So that's just what I was told, but it kind of ended last year with the assistant town administrator basically saying, kind of the buck was being passed back and forth, and I just, I just kind of got over it, so.
John, I think it would be important maybe to just note that the utilities to provide or will serve for the property or the proposed project. And the utilities would be declaring that it wouldn't put any sort of added strain onto the infrastructure of the proposed project. This should be something that maybe the applicant would have to provide to the board, saying that, you know, he's presented his proposed project to local area utilities, and they've kind of signed off on the non, you know, added strain to the local area, you know, not creating any additional safety issues or anything else I think maybe might be worthwhile.
Okay, Drew, that's a good point, and in the past, we've done that for the water supply. The town, the water department has to sign off saying that there's adequate pressure and adequate volume for any development. So this is just going to another, instead of the town utility, this is going to the electric utility. So I think that's a very reasonable condition that.
I mean, anytime you have some sort of application for a new development or a building complex like that, you're going to have contact with an engineer from EverSource or any utility that serves your area. So, you know, they should be able to very easily provide, you know, a letter that could be submitted to the board and just saying that, you know, it's either, hey, you're going to add, you know, excessive strain, they're going to have to do substantial work to the area, or be there, you know, it's not going to add any sort of, you know, additional problems to what currently feeds that grid.
Okay, thank you, Drew. Okay, any other neighbors or public comments?
I did get a response from Carl, the town engineer, if you wanted me to share.
Sure, I'd love to hear.
Apparently, he's checking his emails at quarter to eight on a Wednesday night. So he says, so I said, is Dupie Street a town-accepted road or not? He said, negative, it is listed as town-maintained.
So it is not a town-accepted road, but it is a town-maintained road up to the present, where it is right now?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we learned, so Giannis, does that answer your question? That's right from the town engineer.
Yes, that's what I said. They say it's just maintained by the town.
Chip, the captain just is on an email on this. He's answering people's questions.
Okay. Suzanne, I think you're on mute, if you can hear us.
All the town, the town doesn't do any potholes. All it does is plow, period. No paving, no puddles, no berms, no nothing. Right, Giannis?
Yeah, except they dig up the ones that come in to plow. I won't name any names, but they dig up the dirt, and the last few years, they left holes. And they widened the street actually because it was a good three feet narrower when I moved in here. And that's been over a couple of decades. But yeah, they dig up the dirt and they dump it in my driveway, the gravel and everything. And when I asked, why are you plowing the dirt? I was told, well, if you don't want me to plow, won't plow here, I'm just doing my job. And I said, I didn't say I don't want you to plow, I just want to know why you're plowing the dirt. If you hit pay dirt, you know, you don't dig it. Anyway, so yes, see, it's supposed, whatever town-maintain means. But yet, a year ago in the spring, somebody came onto the street and told me that they were assessing the damage, because we had a lot of tree damage two years ago. And he said, we're going to come and fill these holes up. Well.
And you're still waiting.
Of course. That's where our taxes go.
Okay.
At least we got that finalized. Thank you.
No, that's good.
No, it really is, you know. I was told that years ago.
Okay, other comments from neighbors of the public?
Yes, this is typically comments.
Oh, this is Chuck Pizzano, 37 Summit Ave. Um, I just, just wanted to say that, that, you know, like Tim mentioned, uh, all my other neighbors made all these points, uh, pretty well. I, I do want to mention that I'm a licensed civil engineer, owner of Pizzano Consulting here in Walpole. Um, I think Tetra Tech did a good job and, and I agree with almost everything they said in there. Um, the drainage is, is horrible in the soil in our area. Um, I built my house and I dug the foundation and, you know, I've lived here for the last, uh, six years and I can tell you right now that they're, they're, it's, it's a, it's a dense clay that nothing really comes through. Um, so drainage will be an issue. Uh, we just built the house right, my mother's house that would be, if, if Dupie Street were to be extended, would go right into there and it's same soil over there too. Um, so drainage is a major concern. Uh, water pressure is definitely horrible. Uh, without, without a pump, we can't get it to the second floor right where we are. So the, you know, like I said, all these things have already been mentioned. I just wanted to echo them. Um, and I, yeah, one, one thing to note about, you know, being an engineer and designing different things and all, and the codes that we have and the limitations we have, you know, we have things like minimum road width and we have, you know, minimum off-site parking and things like that. And there are places where all those things should be used, but when you start combining minimum off-street parking with minimum width with maximum height with maximum usage, you start getting a project that doesn't really make a lot of sense, especially for this neighborhood. Um, so sometimes it's not just, just being in line with, you know, while I hit my minimum here and I hit my minimum here and I'm right below my maximum there. It's, it's all these things combined that make something useful, um, or, or make it a good project. And I, I think in this, this particular case, it's, it's, it's really going a little bit far with a lot of these stuff that I, you know, the, the, the parking and the snow removal, if you can ever imagine if we had some snow and there was a Christmas event or something like that on that street, it would be, it would, you, you couldn't get in and out of there, you know, never mind during that with an emergency. You know, there's a reason for these things. Um, and I, I just couldn't imagine what it would be like on that street during those kind of conditions. Um, and that's all I have to say.
Okay, Charles, thank you. And those are all, uh, uh, good points and we've, uh, we've made note, note of those and I'm glad to hear that you've taken, taken a close look at Tetra Tech's peer review. Thanks. Okay, anybody else? Okay, so, um, I didn't think that, you know, we've, we've heard from the, the neighbors. We went through a lot of the technical stuff last, on Monday night, two nights ago and uh, we have some, some notes and some comments from the neighbors, so that's, that's very helpful. The next step that we're going to be looking at is the, the peer reviewer is, or the, yeah, sorry, the applicant's engineer and the applicant are going to go back and they're going to look at their plans and, uh, address some of these issues that have been brought up. And then we're going to go from, go from there. Um, we fortunately have town council with us tonight, so I'm going to, uh, ask, uh, town council, George Pucci, is, um, there anything else that you think we should be addressing tonight with, uh, with this meeting? George?
Uh, no, you've done a great job. As long as everybody's been heard and that nobody's, you know, trying to be heard and their hand can't be seen or anything like that, as it was to, you know, we get from the public. And, and they, they should know as well, this isn't the only chance they get to, to, you know, comment on the project or participate, but it was, uh, something that you specifically put on tonight so that, uh, they would have a specific place where they could do it in an initial round, but they shouldn't think that they're cut off from the process from here on.
You're, you're exactly right. And we're just trying to take these Zoom calls, uh, these are bite by bite. Um, we, we're not going to have big long drawn out meetings because that's not going to benefit anybody in this process. So, um, I think we're going to be wrapping up shortly, but I do see there's a few people that are here at the meeting that have not spoken. If you do want to speak, um, and you're having technical problems or something, you can go over to the chat. And, yeah, I see Ashley already said any final comments if anybody would like to give. Um, but, you know, um, you can go to the chat and, and make your comments or, you know, say, you can say whatever you need to say. Uh, okay. Um, as I wait for some final comments from people, if they have, have any, um, Amy, what's our schedule look like for a, uh, next, next hearing for, for the continuation of this?
So when do you want to continue this?
I thought we already continued it.
We continued it to, tonight, to October 28th and, um, after speaking with town council, um, I would suggest the board consider continuing this matter to the 18th of November. Is that the next?
Excuse me?
Okay.
So.
Ashley, the 18th is a regular, that's a regular zoning board meeting and
So I'm suggesting that because we don't know where the state of things will be in December because things are changing so frequently. So the goal is still to have the full hearing, um, on December 2nd, but we just want to have a date in between that just to make sure that we can, um, adjust if needed, if anything changes in the legislation. George, am I saying that accurately?
Uh, yeah, that's correct. Uh, John, if I can just add, um, uh, Mr. Petrosi also, it, it's not this application, but he also has Burns Ave. And I did notify his council in the HAC proceeding, uh, with an email a couple of hours ago that, uh, the board was going to agree to, um, commence the public hearing on, on the notice of project change on that. I think you were putting that on for November 18th. So you can, you can have Dupie, you can have Dupie Street for, uh, you can have a placeholder on November 18th in case anything changes with the legislation that, you know, you have a cutoff by December 1. If nothing changes, you can always move, you know, not do anything on the 18th for Dupie Street and wait until December 2. You have flexibility, but you, using that interim placeholder date just protects you, you know, to give you flexibility depending on what happens, if anything with the special legislation in the meantime.
Okay. Um, I understand what you're saying, saying, George. Suzanne, you're concerned about something?
I'm, I, 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 I didn't know we were going to have to do three of these at one time. I thought we were going to wait till at least after Christmas to open up a third 40B.
Okay. So what's, it, it's, a lot of this comes down to
Considering one's the biggest project in town.
Right. And one of the things, um, the, the Burns Ave, we, we scheduled for, and sorry for the folks on, um, on Dupie, but I, I just got to explain this to the board. Burns Ave, the, um, revised 40B plan is going to be presented by the applicant on the 18th. It's just going to be a, a, a presentation. It, they're going to be able to show what, what their revised plan looks like. And then we'll continue it from there, Suzanne. But we, we wanted to get it on to, um, we wanted to get it on the agenda, um, the agenda for, um, you know, before, before December. So.
Hey, John, too, can I, can I just note, you're not trying to blindside Mr. Petrosi. If he has a problem with the 18th, we can always, you know, hear him another night, but we, we wanted to get that on, um, you know, with good faith with, with what the consensus board reached the other night and also if, you know, he can be heard the same night as Dupie Street. Suzanne, I just wanted to mention too, is, um, you just want to be careful, uh, you want to give yourself flexibility in case something does happen with the special legislation. If it ends up that they use a cutoff date of December 1, you don't want to get caught short if you have stuff scheduled for later in December. You know, like I say, if nothing changes, you always have the flexibility to continue, um, you know, hearing things piecemeal or quick or continue them further. But I would definitely recommend you, you want to err on the side of caution in case the legislature comes down with, uh, that legislation affecting the stay period. Because before it was very easy if the, the original statute applied, you always had 45 days out from whenever the state of emergency terminated. But the way the proposed amendment is worded is, there's no like grace period at all. It's just a December 1 cutoff. And so here we are, you know, approaching November. So you just want to be careful is all I'm recommending. So that, that was, that was the reason for that.
Okay. And I'm going to try to just clarify all that legal stuff going back and forth between George, Suzanne and me. We're going to continue this until November 18th and we're really not going to have, um, have much, but we're, we're doing that to protect the town and the, the neighbors and even the applicant to a certain extent. Is that right, George?
Uh, yes. And like I say, if nothing changes, um, well, a couple of things can happen. Regardless of whether something changes, you can always get a agreement from the applicant later to extend out time. Uh, then the other issue is if nothing happens and you're, you're still fully in the stay period, you can always just open on the 18th and continue over to December 2. That gives you that flexibility. But having, having this placeholder in between just gives you ma, I like my clients to have maximum flexibility.
Okay. I understand that. And, um, so that being said, um, this case will, um, could I have a motion to continue this until November 18th?
So moved. At 7:00 PM. Sorry.
Moved by Jane. Want to have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Bob. Any further discussion on, uh, moving this, you know, continuing this until the 18th?
Just want to confirm that we got the 7:00 PM start time in there in that motion.
Yeah. Yeah. 7:00 PM on the 18th and, um, so. Mr. Lally, do you have a question or a comment?
Nope. Sorry about that.
Okay. No, that's okay. Okay. Um, this has to be a, uh, it's been, uh, the motion's been made and seconded.
Right. Uh, just one question. Uh, this is with regard to the Burns Avenue, not the, uh, Dupie Street.
No, this is
Oh, this is for Dupie Street.
Yeah, this is
This is for Dupie?
Yes.
I would have said so moved.
Joe, uh, well, George was advising, I think, on the opening of the other matter, if I'm not mistaken. So I just wanted to be clear whether we're talking about the
I was trying to keep them separate, but, um, no, George, George, you're talking about continuing this until the 18th. Please explain.
Correct. I mean, the only reason I brought up Burns Ave is because you were also following advice from the other night about opening the public hearing on that. And as John said, you're trying to do bites at a time. So you would have a short commencement of the hearing on that date where the applicant could present concerning his changes. And it would be a nice night to put it on Dupie Street since it's the same applicant. It's a different applicant, but the same principal who comes in and represents the applicant. Um, so that's the only reason it came up, but, but your motion is definitely for Dupie Street.
That's what the hearing is set for tonight, Dupie Street, and we're continuing it until the 18th at 7 o'clock. It'll be a Zoom meeting and, um, so that being, that being said, and that's to, um, give us flexibility. I, I really don't expect a lot of information at that meeting from Dupie Street. Uh, I think we're doing this to, you know, as a placeholder, but that is the next time we are going to be meeting. And if the applicant has updated plans or something, he can submit them at that, that point or before. Okay. It's been, the motion's been made, seconded, and this has to be a roll, Suzanne?
We made, we made a meeting, a, a, a date last night, December 2 for Mr. Petrosi.
That's right. And what, that was not, what we did was we continued, Monday's night meeting, Monday, the meeting Monday night was continued until tonight. And then we were looking further down. We said the next possible, you know, December 2nd would be another date when we could have, have it. At the advice of council, council's saying we should have a placeholder on the 18th for Dupie Street. It's going to protect the town.
Yeah. Could I just clarify it? I haven't clarified very well up till now. I'll try one more time. I apologize for my, uh, my not succinct communication. That, that is all I'm recommending is that you just have that placeholder for Dupie Street. You had already talked to the applicant the other night about what you were teeing up for December 2nd. That's all well and good. You haven't canceled that December 2nd date, but November 18th just gives you a placeholder. And since you were already, uh, planning on noticing Burns Ave for November 18th, that's the only reason I brought that up is that the 18th is a good convenient date to have as a placeholder. Then if something changes with the legislation and you have to use that date substantively, you can do that. If not, or, um, you know, you reach other, some type of other, you know, three month out extension or whatever, you can just continue it over to December 2, um, on that night. So it was just meant as a placeholder just to give you more flexibility.
Okay. Suzanne, you under, you good?
I'm just dandy.
Okay. Um, roll call vote to continue until the 18th at 7 o'clock. Murphy?
Murphy, aye.
Drew Delaney?
Aye.
Dane Coffey?
Aye.
Bob Fitzgerald?
Aye.
And I'm John Lee, aye. Okay. So it continued out until the 18th and, um, the applicant has the peer review and hopefully is going to take a look at all that information. Uh, zoning board members, anything else for the meeting tonight? Oh, yes. Um, I have a question on the, uh, the minutes. We can do the, uh, the minutes from Monday night. Um, let's see. Amy, what is your title with the, um, what is your title with the, the board?
Um, zoning, zoning board secretary.
Okay. It said something about community development for, for you. So, um,
That's just the department that I'm under. I don't know. It's a little confusing.
Yeah, it is. Um, Ashley, what's going on?
Yeah, why does it say that?
Uh, so Amy's the, she's the ZBA board secretary, um, under the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Okay. In that, okay.
When, when did zoning go into that?
I was just going to say the same thing. When?
So for clarification.
Bobby and we can talk about it? I don't
I, I want you to
I don't, I don't know when that happened and I've been on it quite a while and I was on it years ago, three terms and wasn't, didn't happen then. I
I haven't even left and gone anywhere and it wasn't like that.
Yeah. I, I want to know when that happened. It, it didn't happen.
Okay. So why don't we just go back to whenever, for the zoning board, for the meetings, Amy, you're, um, board, board secretary, uh, zoning board secretary, I'm sorry, um, what is it? Administrative secretary? Because technically, um, if you look at it, Bob, um, yeah, oh, no, Bob's the clerk, I guess. So secretary's fine. Um, but I did go through the, the minutes and I, I thought the minutes were very extensive. It covered a lot of good points. It's, uh, it shows the issues that were brought up at the, at the last meeting, particularly by the peer review. So Amy, I thought that was really good, um, to show the, um, all the issues that were brought up. So, that being said, um, does anybody have any, uh, other questions about the minutes from the meeting on Monday?
Just had one, uh, typo, I think, which is worth correcting, which is, um, sort of, one, let's see, one, two, three, four. The seventh line down, the first word is legislature. And I think it, I think you meant, um, legislation.
Oh, okay.
Thanks.
Okay. Anybody have any other things to change on the minutes? And I, I looked for some key words in there and they were in there. So that was, uh, a good job, Amy. Okay. Um, could I have a motion to accept the minutes of October 26th?
So moved.
Moved by Suzanne.
Second.
Second by Bob. Okay. Any further discussion on the minutes? Okay. No further discussion. Roll call vote for the minutes. Suzanne Murphy? Suzanne Murphy?
Murphy, aye.
Drew Delaney?
Aye.
Dave Anderson?
Aye.
Bob Fitzgerald?
Aye.
And I'm John Lee, aye. Okay, and finally, could, uh, does somebody want to make a motion to adjourn, unless we have some, some other business to discuss? Ashley, we good?
I think so.
Hey, Amy, we good?
Yeah.
Okay.
So moved on adjourning.
Okay, I was going to ask George if we were all set, but that's.
Oh, let's ask George, George will stick something else up at us, yeah.
George, you're on mute. Okay, motion.
Oh, sorry, I, I said, I dare not say anything else tonight.
Okay. Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Suzanne.
Second.
Second by Bob. All those in favor of adjourning, Suzanne?
Murphy, aye.
Drew?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
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 Jane?
Aye.
And I'm John Lee, aye. Okay, this meeting is adjourned. I will see you all later.